All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the June 10th County Council Meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, Jennifer Auditor's report.
Okay, so we started the year with a beginning net balance of $7,996,572. You've granted additional appropriations to date of $60,736. And we've had miscellaneous expenditures of $22,348, giving and available for appropriation from the general fund of $7,913,488. Of that, you have a request today. Total requests are $3,440,000, three million of that being a transfer from general fund to the self-insurance fund, which we've talked about for a couple of meetings now. As far as revenue goes, I didn't see anything to be too concerned about. We inquired with maybe three or four departments about, you know, being under 50% of the year and just kind of checking in on some things. But again, nothing to be concerned about. So if we disregard property taxes at this point, because we haven't done settlement yet, we're at 34.8% collected. And then as far as fund balances, just wanted to point out that that Fund 4710, the self-insurance, which again, we have been talking about for a couple of meetings, is at $3.6 million. On your agenda, there are two items in the consent agenda that have been requested to be polled, one being the prosecutor transfer and the other being the health HIV grant. Both of those could show up at a later date, but have requested that they be polled from the consent agenda today anyway. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Anybody, any questions for Jennifer? All right, Udara, Treasurer's report.
Good morning. We ended the month of May with an account balance of $325,630,141.05 and a total interest of $953,825.74. The average rate for the month was 4.59% and the weighted average rate was 4.58%. As of May, the general fund has received 63% of the total interest, a little over $2 million, with us being, or being 41% of the year our collect, or we are at 42% of the original forecasted budget. So I think we're doing pretty well and we don't know if Fed funds might stay the same, which is going to come tomorrow. I think they have a meeting. We are at 97% of our collection rate for spring property taxes. And I would like to take a moment to thank my staff. I was short-staffed, a full-time employee in attempt, and Jayden, Carla, and Dawn work long hours through lunches, so if you see them, please thank them. Other departments in the county helped with my office, like Juan and CND and the Recorder's Office, thanks to the Auditor's Office. They always help us out a lot, too. Forgive me if I, you know, skip over anybody, but thank you. That's all I have for today.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Udara? All right, Udara, thank you for all your hard work as well. All right, public comment on any of the agenda items. Do we have any comments from the public? All right, we will move forward with Resolution 2025-12-CL.
Make a motion where you approve Resolution 2025-12-CL.
Second.
All right, I have a motion on the table from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Richard. Colin?
Good morning. My name is Colin Huffines. I am the Economic Development Manager for Greater Lafayette Commerce. So this is a personal property tax abatement application for BioBond Adhesives. I do have a representative here from the company. If you do have any questions for them.
Thank you, Colin. I personally would like to hear a little bit about what the business is. If you don't mind.
Good morning. My name is Ken Bowle. At BioBond Adhesives, we're a brand-new startup company. We've been in existence a year and a half when GFRP, Generation Food Rural Partnerships, hired Mark McConaughey to run this business. We've been in our location for not quite a year. Part of the GFRP stipulations are that 70% of the jobs are in rural areas. So we ended up renting a facility out near West Point from Bex, and we've been in that facility, like I said, for almost a year now. We are working on plant-based coatings and adhesives, floor coatings, roof coatings, wall coatings, adhesives for all the way from construction wood to tiles and leather. We're doing a lot of research. We've got a lot of products already. We are starting to sell our products, and so that is good. We did a whole slew of alpha sites, including, we're currently still working on LTHC. The floor at LTHC, we have a contractor who's redoing the floors there, putting down our protective three-layer coatings and then some flakes. And that is on the company's, we're doing that as a gift to LTHC and the Lafayette community. Then we have about 15 employees. We have multiple sites. This is our headquarters here in Lafayette, West Point. We also have a center in Phoenix and a development center in Santa Ana, California.
All right, thank you so much.
Any questions?
Yeah, so you mentioned GFRP. Can you explain what that is?
That is a relatively new fund for startup companies. And they look for, they work mainly on patents, like patents coming out of colleges. So some of our products are based on some patents from Oregon State, Purdue University. And in the past, the model has not been very good for startup companies. And colleges don't really have a method to go from their research to commercialization of products. So GFRP was formed to kind of bridge that gap, to make a really great mode to get intellectual properties from colleges onto the market. And they, the one big difference with GFRP is they are funding two steps. So I, from what I understand, and I'm still new to all this, Mark McConaughey, he's just done a number of startups, but this is all new to me. If you get your first funding, and then you got to start selling products before your second funding, but it's kind of a circular thing. You can't sell products without the funding, you know, you can't make them. But GFRP does the second funding as well.
Okay, is it, is it a federal program? Is it a private venture?
It's a private venture, yeah.
Okay, okay. And then my other question is, how much, how much is the property? What is this tax? Maybe I'm missing the paper, because I'm seeing you showing it up there. Okay, never mind, I'll look at that.
Was your question how much revenue savings it's going to save these? I had the same thought.
How much revenue savings?
Are you talking about the percentage? Like year one is 100%, year two is 80%, year three is 60%?
When you get the tax abatement, how much money are you going to save revenue per year? Back to your business then, so you don't have to pay the county the taxes?
That is not something that I know.
Well, you're asking for a tax abatement, I mean, how much money are you going to save? How much are you going to not be able to, you know, to pay out?
Colin, do you have those numbers?
I don't have exact numbers, but it's a percentage tied to whatever the increase in tax value is.
That probably hasn't been assessed yet for.
No, no, none of the equipments purchased or installed.
Right, they cannot give an exact amount. They can only go by percentage.
So that's the estimated cost of the equipment, but we don't know what the taxes will be. Of the cost of the personal property, yeah.
So what's stated on the SB one is, is the total cost of what they're estimating the manufacturing equipment's going to be and the IT equipment. What the tax abatement savings is actually on is what the assessed value of that. So it will be actually, more than likely, it's usually lower than that. So it'll be based on that, not the actual cost that's stated there.
But we don't really know what tax abatement we're giving them at this point. We just know what it's going to be on, but we don't know the dollar amounts.
Right, and we just know the percentages of, it's a, it's a request for a five-year tax abatement with a scaled-down percentage, which is stated in the resolution for five years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
My other question is, if you don't get the tax abatement, what are the implications of that?
Yeah, the financial part, I'm not involved in at all. I'm not sure. Our CEO is not able to make it to this. Yeah, I guess, you know, we would just continue as good as we could.
Okay.
I really, maybe we couldn't, wouldn't be able to buy as much equipment. So the lab here, we have a large, well, a small lab, wet lab, but then a large area that we're doing research and development. We've purchased an, like a tensile strength instrument to do some measurements on peeling the things apart that we've glued together. We're also looking at developing a compostability lab, and that would require a certain significant amount of income. Considering doing mixing here, we're currently doing it with a toller, but we're having issues. So we're considering possibly, you know, putting something here that we could do mixing. So it could be that we just wouldn't be able to, you know, purchase equipment as quickly as we had hoped.
So you make the product here?
Currently, we do not. Currently, we just do research and development here, and then the product is made in Texas.
So there's no waste streams involved, right, correct?
Right.
All right. So and you're based out of Phoenix?
Well, this is, this is our base here in Lafayette.
One more question. How many local people do you have employed, I mean, came from this, from this area?
From this area? So we have myself, and then we have five Purdue students that we're using. Purdue, it's a really great opportunity for them, and it works well for us during the school year. They're part-time during the summer, some of them are full-time. And then Clayton, who's our chief science officer, just graduated from Purdue a little over a year ago. So here locally, that's, that's all we have. But then our company does have other locations, but yeah.
And with this tax abatement, they are looking to add an additional 38 employees as well.
I see that.
Yeah, if we get the lab going, the compostability area going, we'll need more employees.
So the tax abatement definitely will help us in expanding the workforce and the number of employees locally, so that's a great opportunity for the community.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the council?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for making the investment in our community.
And just as a reminder, because this hasn't yet been set up as an economic revitalization area, it's a two-step process, so you're, this is a declaratory resolution. If you passed it, then we'd publish notice, there'd be an opportunity for public hearing at, I presume, the July meeting, and then you'd consider a confirmatory resolution.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion and second place for the resolution of designating the ERA for this project. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you.
Well, thank you. And let me invite you all. We're planning to have a grand opening of the Activity Center at LTHC in July 14, and you all are welcome to come. I think we'll be sending out invitations, so we're hoping to make a nice presentation there.
Thank you. All right, now some real fun. We have, it's that time of year where we do the compliance of statement benefits for all the existing tax abatements that we have, and Colin is here today to go through them, but first I request a motion to get it on the floor.
Make a motion. We put the compliance statement benefits on the floor.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in place with Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Richard. Colin?
Would you like to just go through them one at a time or as a bunch?
Yeah, because what we'll do is, we, if you want to just talk about them overall, would be great. And then what we'll do is go through individually. We'll have to vote on each company individually, so we'll have to do a motion.
For each company?
For each one, yeah.
All right, so we'll get started here with American Fiber Tech Corporation, which is also Industrial Pallet Corp. I do have some individuals here from the company. And so in terms of employees and investment, both are substantially compliant for both the real, the 2017 and 2022 tax abatements. If you have any questions, I could call up the individuals from the company.
I guess I should rephrase that, or we should rephrase that motion since we did, just to put them off the board, designate this first one as American Fiber Tech. So Ben, can you?
I will amend my motion to be, make a motion to approve the American Fiber Tech Corporation RE, real estate, there's two of them, and personal property, there's two of them.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second in place. So yes, if the company representative would like to come up, that would be great.
Good morning. My name's Jason Rainey. I'm with Industrial Pallet. Just want to say that, that obviously the abatements that we've used in the past have been helpful in allowing us to continue to grow. As you see on our compliance, we've, we've got 258 employees now out there on corner 28 and 52. It's allowed us to keep our competitive advantages in a lot of the areas, too. With the 22 project, we installed a couple of robots to do dismantling there, which is one of the most dangerous jobs we have out there. So now the robots, they do the majority of that work where they take that pallet and strip down the nails and remove the boards, and then it runs through a sawmill now on that, after it runs through that phase, to cut those boards to length so we can use them on pallets and send them back out into the market. But I did want to say, I appreciate the abatements, and it has allowed us to continue to grow and move forward. So, thank you.
Any questions from the council?
So these are 10-year-long abatements, and the first one was, was approved in 2017, is that right?
So the real estates are 10 and the properties 7.
Five.
Yeah. So the real estate abatement is 10 years, personal property is the five, or seven year.
Seven years, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Apex Warehouse.
Make a motion where you approve the Apex Warehouse and Logistics LLC, Real Estate One, compliance with statement benefits.
Second.
Motion in place for Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Richard.
All right, yes, so this is a real property tax abatement for Apex Warehouse. Again, I do have a representative here from the company. And being a warehouse space, typically they don't come with as much job creation, but I know that they are supporting a couple of local companies here with that warehouse space. I do have that representative here. If there's any questions.
Good morning. My name is Kelly Andrews, representing Apex. We thank the committee for the abatements that have allowed us to grow through the years. This one only shows the one, which is, was the latest one that we did, but through the last 10 years, we've done a couple, and this have allowed us to put companies in our warehouses and bring some manufacturing here to, to the city of Lafayette. So while this one looks a little bit smaller, this was the smallest one of the all, of all the ones that we've done, so it's not a great projection of what we've done from a job creation and bringing jobs or companies and businesses here to the, to the city. But this is where we're at on the last one. So thank you, we appreciate you guys allowing us to continue to grow, and hopefully here we'll be able to maybe add some more additional warehousing as we see fit for companies coming and wanting to bring more businesses to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from council? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. All right, for the third one.
Make a motion where you approve the Dormee LLC, Real Property One, compliance of statement of benefits.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Richard.
All right. So yes, Dormee LLC, otherwise known as Highway Safety Services. This is a real property tax abatement. I do have a representative here to discuss the project. The employment numbers are higher than the SB one. They have had a slight reduction from last year, though.
I'm Doug Nagel, General Manager of Highway Safety Services. Appreciate your support. We've had substantial growth since the abatement, not only of numbers of people, but of also salaries. Mike has also reinvested substantially in not only the equipment that it takes to grow the business, but in the people, which I think is also significant to the discussion. We're a union shop, which is about $30 an hour now, and benefits is almost up to $19 an hour. And in addition to that, we also have a 401K. So trying to just give you a feel for our culture and the reinvestment in not only the equipment and that kind of thing, but in the people. So I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Any questions from council? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion passes, thank you. All right, next.
Make a motion where you approve Geo3 Holdings LLC, Real Property, there's one of them, compliance of statement of benefits.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Richard.
So this is a real property tax abatement for Geo3 Holdings. It's the real property portion of Allstate Fasteners. So if you'll see, the employment figures are higher than what was estimated on the SB one. It is slightly lower than last year, similar to the last one, but they are on track.
I'm Ken Bowle with Allstate Faster, Vice President of Operations. We appreciate the abatement, and it's allowed us to continue the operation and grow slightly and invest back in this material handling and equipment, so thank you very much.
Any questions from council? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, thank you. All right, Liquid Springs.
Make a motion where you approve Liquid Spring Partners LLC, Real Property, there are two of them, compliance with statement of benefits.
Second.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Richard.
All right, so Liquid Spring Partners, this one is nearing its end, but as you'll see on the sheet, their employment figures are considerably higher than what they started with at the beginning of this tax abatement. So they are substantially compliant. And there is two Liquid Spring abatements here, but passed at the same time.
And will these be, will this, will this be the last year? Am I reading that right? 2015?
I believe so. I'd have to check, but I think one of the real property may, so real property is interesting in that if you only do half of the project in the first year and then half in the second year, technically a 10-year can become an 11-year. But I'd have to check on that, I'm not sure off the top of my head.
That's correct, and the second one was 2018, so it would be a little longer.
Any questions from the council? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Tri Clinic Labs.
Make a motion where you approve the Tri Clinic Labs Incorporated for Personal Property is one of them, for their compliance of statement benefits.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Richard for Tri Clinic Labs.
All right, so this is a personal property tax abatement for Tri Clinic Labs. As you'll see on there, their employment figures are considerably higher than when they started the tax abatement. They primarily do research and development with this tax abatement.
Morning, everyone. I'm Sean Camilla, I'm the CEO of Tri Clinic Labs. We are, for those of you that don't know, a global leading pharmaceutical development company located here in Tippecanoe County. It's our 15th year, and we'd like to thank you for the tax abatements. They're very enabling for a small business like ours. Happy to take any questions you have.
Any questions from council? All right, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, last one, Ludofact.
Make a motion where you approve Ludofact USA LLC, Personal Property, there's one of them, for their compliance of statement benefits.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilman Murray, and second from Councilman Richard.
All right, so this is a personal property tax abatement for Ludofact. You will notice on there a significant decrease from the time that they started this. So they did start this in the middle of the pandemic, and obviously they are a puzzle-making company. So that has had an effect. I do have representatives here that can discuss that further. There is a fair amount of seasonality to this business as well. So these numbers are taken at, on 1125, these employment figures. So if you do have any questions, I do have representatives here.
Good morning. I'm JP Clausen, I'm the President of Ludofact USA. Ludofact USA is a leader in, is actually the largest independent jigsaw puzzle and board game manufacturer in the U.S. They also have facilities in Germany as well. As I mentioned, COVID was a double-edged sword for the company. It was phenomenal for a couple of years. It was tough for a couple of years. We've now steadied that ship. I joined the company about a year ago, and to show you the commitment that the, the ownership has, they've stopped bringing in sort of folks from Europe to run the company for two-year cycles. They've hired a local. I'm a resident of Lafayette the last 25 years, in the industry for about 25 years, including a company called the Lafayette Puzzle Factory that ran for about nine and a half years before it was bought by a bigger toy company. We remain committed to the, to the community, obviously. We have turned the cycle coming out of the COVID hangover. We steadied the ship. We have, our revenues are up this year almost 35% so far. Margins and bottom lines will be even better than that, and things like this really help. You know, through those dark times, this really helped us get it through there, and we continue to plan to grow and be a leader in this industry.
Thank you. Any questions from the council?
So how much was this abatement going to be this year?
I was here in '21.
Yeah.
I'll point to my CFO. This is what the president does when he's been there a year. Does anyone know? I don't know the exact number.
The manufacturing equipment was about 1.2 million and... Looks like there was an additional 635,000. No, I'm sorry. It was estimated to be 1.2, and the investment was actually 635,000.
So do we know, I'm sorry, what on the compliance, was the full investment made?
Was all the equipment bought? Is that what you're asking?
The actual amount was 635,000.
Yeah, I was going to ask what the full compliance requirements were in the initial approval. If we know that.
I wasn't here in '21, so I'm not sure.
It was, it was 1.2 was what was estimated for the equipment, and then 635,000 was the actual investment.
Okay.
So half, roughly half.
Yeah, we bought some, what the equipment allows you to do, those baggers and whatnot that they're talking about, is really, it gives capacity, you know. To make a jigsaw puzzle, you have to break it up, you have to bag it, you have to break it into pieces. That's, that's an automatic job anyway, and that doesn't really take a person. But then we have a person who has to run the press, run the baggers, and of course, do the final part to it. So it actually, it helped increase their capacity, and obviously during COVID, you couldn't get enough capacity, in all honesty, to go forward.
And I know when the SB ones usually are made, it's obviously an estimate of what the equipment is going to cost. And sometimes they come in when you actually make the purchase, comes in a little cheaper, which you hope sometimes. So in this case, was all the equipment purchased that was, that you were wanting to purchase? Or, and was there just a reduction in the cost of the equipment when it was purchased?
Yes, all the equipment was purchased because we have it all, so I'm sure of that. The negotiation on the purchase price, I'm not 100% sure. It sounds like that's the case. I mean, to be honest, that's sort of surprising. I don't know if they overvalued it because at that time it was hard to get puzzle equipment. I was running a factory in Jacksonville at the time, and it was 18 months to get a lot of this equipment, kind of a thing. So I assume probably if they estimated it higher, it was for that reason. It was just, it really wasn't available. And so I suspect that's what happened, but I have to check for sure to understand what happened there exactly. But the equipment was bought. We have all that equipment in the building, for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
This might be a question for the CFO, but just wondering if you could shed some light on how the number of employees has almost halved, that the salary has stayed about the same?
I could probably answer that. We've increased salaries. I can look at the historic numbers. I mean, our, our salary is almost $20 an hour now. You know, we start people probably at 17, 15, they quickly get to 20, and we routinely have machine operators that run $25 an hour. We've also increased benefits, so you know, the health plan, we offer dental, eye, all those kind of things, maternity leave. So in terms of getting employees, it's been difficult, and so Ludo had to respond to that as well. Looking back, I mean, I think at the time when all this sort of thing was going on, I think the average salaries were significantly less than that. They were in the $14 range, kind of a thing. I mean, they've gone up. It's been one of our biggest cost drivers in that.
And do you expect to be hiring more people soon with the revenue increases?
I have three openings right now for machine operators you can send to my way, and then we hire seasonally. So we hire somewhere between 12 and 18 seasonal workers. The business is incredibly seasonal. Jigsaw puzzles are a winter activity. So you know, this is taken kind of at the end of the season. Usually by the end of November, the season's over. We start letting seasonal workers go. But at our max, we'll be in the mid 70s, kind of a place where I think we end up in that kind of a range with all the seasonal folks going forward.
So I'm sympathetic to your situation, but I just have to say, as a council, if we're not going to... People come to us and want a tax abatement, and they don't follow through, and we don't... If we approve everything that they send to us, then I'm worried about what kind of signal that sends in the future for future tax abatements. So that's my thoughts.
For sure, and you know what? I could be sympathetic to that as well, and you know, if you kind of, again, you have to sort of look at historic. So business can just kind of do what it knows it's doing. In 2021, it seemed like this was, you know, it was never going to end, sort of a thing in the jigsaw puzzle world. So I think the intent was always there, never to mislead or anything else. Every puzzle company at that time, and game company at that time, you know, was going beyond full tilt, kind of a thing. So I don't think it's any unrealistic, what they were seeing at the time. We all know now that there was a huge hangover afterwards. We do think going forward that tariffs help us, depending on how the China tariffs sort of work out. That's our biggest competitor. We don't really have domestic competition very much, it's China. So the tariff situation happening now is, for the most part, a benefit for us. So like I said, I think lots changed in sort of leadership and the way we're planning the future. I'm trying to be more conservative on that. But I appreciate your concern, for sure.
So voting, if we voted no, does that, that doesn't apply like retroactively, right, to the previous year's abatement?
No, it's just for this last, yeah, this one.
There's also an extra step. So if you were to vote no, then you would, you would move forward with a motion to find they were noncompliant, and then that would result in a hearing. Like, you have to notify a company that you think they're noncompliant, which then gives them a chance to explain the cause, and so it's basically two findings, is that you would want to find that they're noncompliant and that they don't have good cause for being noncompliant. And at that step, then the future abatements would go away. So I don't know where we are in terms of the cycle. I don't know how many years, but...
Would that hearing just be at the next county council meeting, or would that be a special thing?
It'd be up to you guys to decide. I forget what the timeframes are. There has to be certain advance notice. I expect it could probably happen, get the notices out before the July hearing, if that's what you wanted to do.
And if I could add, similar to earlier, the tax abatement is only applied to that increase in assessed value. So with the personal property that was purchased, the tax abatement's only tied to what was purchased, not tied to the estimate.
The 600, yeah, thousand versus the 1.2.
Right.
Any other questions? Are we ready for a vote?
Yes.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Opposed. Aye, whatever. No.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's it for me.
I think so. Thank you so much, Colin. All right, next up, Tepanou County Solid Waste Management District. Get a motion in a second, please.
Make a motion, we approve the tire recycling grant appropriation of $10,000.
Second.
We have a motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Richard. Mr. Murtaugh.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we received an IDIM grant for $10,000 to do a tile, a tire recycling event. That event actually has already happened, and it was successful, hosted in May. We had a number of great volunteers and a decent turnout, so we just need that, those funds appropriated so we can pay the bill.
Any questions from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, now we're down to the consent agenda with a reminder that two items were pulled. The prosecutor for 10,000, and then the health, HIV Prevention Health Program, total of 29,521. If I could get a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda with the changes just stated.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Basham. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Additional appropriations, Superior Court four.
Can you make a motion to approve additional appropriation for Superior Court four for the general fund in the amount of $14,000?
Second.
Motion in place from Councilwoman Dolan, second from Councilman Richard. Discussion.
So this is the issue we've been having all year around jury trials and more costs than we anticipated?
Any questions from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Superior Court six.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve additional appropriation for Court Interpreter Services Fund 9549 for $9,000.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilwoman Dolan, second from Councilman Richard. Discussion.
Okay, again, as we talked about last month, when Judge Morrissey was here, he was trying to get a grant appropriation from the state to help with translators. He has gotten that grant, and now he would just like to spend that grant, so.
All right, any questions from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, magistrate.
I'd like to make a request for appropriation for $1,000 from the general fund for $426,000.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilwoman Dolan, second from Councilman Richard. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm magistrate Sarah Wyatt. I've provided additional details about this request to Councilwoman Dolan and Councilman Richards, but wanted to come over and be available to personally answer any questions that the council may have regarding the nature and size of the request.
Could you talk a little bit about it, just so the general audience knows what's going on? I know that we've talked about it a lot, but I think it'd be good for everyone to hear what's going on.
Absolutely. So about four years ago now, the law changed in Indiana where if juveniles are charged as adults in the adult court, we used to put them in the jail, subject to bond. They are now no longer allowed to be in the jail, and so we have to send them to juvenile detention centers. We don't have one here in Tepanou County, so we have to send them to out-of-county facilities, which have a range of rates and are all over the place for us. And so this request is related to ongoing expenses for housing those juveniles. About $326,000 of this request is for what I'm going to characterize as current liabilities, meaning cases that are filed with juveniles presently in custody. And that is calculated either through the end of the year or the juvenile's 18th birthday, whichever occurs first. And then the additional $100,000 included in the request is for additional cases that may be filed here in the second half of the year.
Any questions from council?
Magistrate, does the Safe Keeper Beds program, since that went away, that also reduces the amount of locations we could place these individuals? Is that correct?
It both reduces the number of locations where we can send juveniles, and it eliminates one of our lower-cost options. The DOC Safe Keeper Beds were about $150 a day, or excuse me, $135 a day. And now that we don't have those beds available, there are other facilities that are happy to take our juveniles, but they are both further away, and they are significantly more expensive.
So simply supply and demand.
Exactly.
Lower supply, high demand. They can charge significantly more.
Exactly.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carrie Helm.
Make a motion, we approve the salary statement for school-based youth liaison, PAT two. This was approved by personal committee and the board commissioners.
Second.
All right, a motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Richard. Discussion. Good morning.
Good morning. This is a grant-funded position. It's been in our Juvenile Community Corrections Grant for some time now. We have shifted some of the responsibilities for the evidence-based coordinator because that position has been vacant for the last year, and we have realized that we need more additional services in the schools. We are serving well over 1,000 youth across all of our school-based services, and so an additional person, so reallocating that position, which is really what it is. It's not, it's a net zero change to the budget. It's eliminating the evidence-based coordinator and then creating an additional school-based youth liaison position.
Questions from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, the second one for Carrie Helm.
Make a motion, we approve the juvenile alternatives DOC Grant Fund 9643 Grant Appropriation in the amount presented.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Richard. Discussion.
This is our annual juvenile community corrections grant, beginning July 1, 2025, ending June 30, 2026. It is pretty much the same services that we have had ongoing with our school-based support, our intensive home-based services, our day reporting, and our electronic monitoring and attendance services.
Questions from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Salary statement.
Make a motion, we approve the salary statement for a probation officer slash surveillance officer for $47,603, and a school-based youth liaison, there's two of them at PAT two, for $53,808.
Second.
Motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Richard.
These are the salary statements to support the grant request.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Health Department.
Make a motion, we approve the Health Department Donation Fund 4118 appropriation in the amount of $1,000.
Second.
You got second, Ben?
Ben?
Okay. Motion in place from Councilman Murray, second from Councilman Carson. Discussion.
Stacy, do you want to talk about your great program? This is for donation from Community Baby Shower for the Franciscan Alliance.
Oh, yes. So this, this went to our community baby shower that we had in May and served over 118 in-person expectant mothers, and then we had, I think, 20 more on a reserve list, and we've got to them as well. So it's a partnership with Franciscan every year, and it just keeps getting bigger and bigger.
That's awesome. Thank you.
That is awesome program. Thank you. Any questions from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Auditor.
Madam President, I would move that we approve the transfer from the general fund to Self Insurance Reserve Fund 4710 for the amount of $3 million.
Second.
Yeah, I think it's directly to the self-insurance fund, not the reserve fund. We have one of each.
It said self-insurance reserve fund.
Oh, did it? I'm sorry. It's not to the reserve. It's to the, the regular self-insurance fund.
So what fund is it?
4710. The number's correct. It shouldn't say reserve. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Okay. I'll amend it to, Madam President, I would move that we approve the transfer of $3 million to the Fund 4710.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in place from Councilman Basham, and a second from Councilman Carson. Discussion. This is what we've talked about for the last few months.
Sure. I don't know, Stacy, you want to suggest it or?
Yes, this is for what I presented on last council meeting, I believe it was. We're just going through it right now in 4710. Two weeks ago, we had over $300,000 for our weekly claims bill from just health insurance. It's just a rough year. Look forward to the next three or four. It's important to note that though our premiums, what we deduct and what the general fund puts into 4710 each pay period, we fund it to 11 million. That, that does not account for what we have taken out of 4710 throughout the years and put back into 4710 throughout the years for various reasons. So we don't, we are overfunding. It's just not built into our premiums at this time. So 3 million's appropriate, and unfortunately, it's probably just going to get us through the rest of the year.
Any questions from council? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, so it looks, what's it, right? All right, it looks like we're at committee. All right, it looks like we're at committee reports. Any committee reports?
Madam President, I do want to discuss, committee report says, outside meetings, I know the juvenile detention facility is on people's minds, given the appropriation today, with the ramifications of Senate Bill 1 and all the dominoes of that. Our financial consultant, Greg Garitas, will be here June 24 at 9:00 a.m. that I'd like to invite council and the Board of Commissioners to attend. We'd call it a work session meeting to get kind of his feedback and his recommendations on things of how we weather the storm, so to speak, all the changes and options that we have at our disposal. So if there's a quorum, we need to publish it and notice that, but that is something that we'd like to throw out there. It's going to occur in a couple of weeks.
What was that date again?
June 24 at 9:00 a.m. in the Tepanew Room, if you can be here.
Thank you, Ben. All right, any other committee reports? Unfinished business? New business? Commissioners, FYI, Commissioner Byers.
First, I just want to say thank you for being patriotic. We have red, blue, and white. So congratulations to you all on coordinating that stuff. I would highly, highly recommend, get to this meeting on the 24th. This is no longer easy street as a council member. You will be imposed on raising taxes, income taxes, and things like this. It's coming, is the easiest way to say. So don't skip this just because. This is information that you all need to be finding out, especially with budget coming right around the corner for us. The Juve Center, we know what we can build. We're up to $1 million housing kids this year.